I'd like to call the board's meeting of the Mercer County Board of Education. Mr. Boer, roll call please.
Good evening. District one, Amber Franceschi.
Here.
District two, Larry Yager.
Here.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Here.
District four, Cliff Prue, is absent tonight. And district five, Randy Phillips.
Here. Uh, pledge your allegiance, Mr. Boer.
This evening, we've got Mercer County senior high school student Hannah Phillips to the biggest of the pledge. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you very much. Right now, we need to swear and want to say congratulations to our three board members who successfully won reelection. And Ms. Amber Meyer will swear the oath.
We have Amber Franceschi, district one. This is long. Okay, now it is. Amber Franceschi, district one, feel standing. Billy Montgomery, district three, feel standing. And Mr. Yager is district two, and he's already been sworn in. So we're going to swear to him. If you'll raise your right hand, I'm going to read the oath, and then you just say that you will go by the end of that one. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue as citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the office of member of the Mercer County Board of Education according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Right now, can I please have a motion to approve this evening's agenda? I'll make the call. Mr. Montgomery makes the motion. May I have a second, okay? Second, Mr. Yager, on favor. It's now time for our monthly recognitions, Mr. Boer.
Student Representative, Luke White-Nax, going to do the recognitions tonight for us. First up is the Superior Titan Award winners for the month of December. To be a Superior Titan Award winner, a student must have perfect attendance during the month that they're being observed, completed all their homework, assignments and tests, they have passing grades in all their classes, no discipline issues, demonstrates good leadership skills, exhibits a winning attitude and spirit toward learning and peers. It's also, we call it the Dairy Queen Superior Titan Award, because tomorrow or the next day, they'll get a large free blizzard. I'll go around the classrooms and give these winners a free blizzard for their hard work in the classroom. So this month's Superior Titan Award winner for the elementary school is Luca Horn. So Luca, come on. The Dairy Queen Superior Titan Award winner for the intermediate school is Preston Barber. Not here tonight, okay? We'll make sure we get that to him. For the middle school, the Superior Titan Award winner is Abby Walker. And for the high school, the Superior Titan Award winner is Taylor Kurtzinger. And also this time, I know Mr. Luke was absent, or he was ill last board meeting, but he was the Superior Titan Award winner for the month of November for the high school. So let's recognize him so he can have this time. We had other students that we'd like to recognize, one of which was the KBMEA All-State Band Member, was selected for that All-State team, and that's Emily Kurtzinger. She was All-State member. KYA Supreme Court Justice was recognized at the state level, Brooklyn Mullins. And then we've got a list here, also at the KYA Premier Delegation. They were named that, and as I call your name, all of you all come up and we'll take one picture there, here up front. So please hold your applause till we get through all these. Kate Carlton, Savannah Floyd, Jack Gammon, Kalise Gammon, Kalie Gibson, Ashley Howard, Riley Johnson, Sage Markham, Trinity McCoy, Jersey McGuinness, Kylie Mobley, Brooklyn Mullins, Hannah Phillips, Billy and Trevilla, and Carter Wilson. Let's give them a big hand. Well, then while they're taking that picture, I was going to talk about Brooklyn Mullins for a second. She was, she served as the Supreme Court Chief Justice and successfully defended her Supreme Court opinion overturning an executive order by the KYA Governor based on constitutionality. Brooklyn will be moving on to the National Supreme Court Justice Program. So that's a great honor for Brooklyn. So again, let's give all those.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Hampton. I'm a special education teacher at Mercer Central Day Treatment. I'm also the KEA Secretary for the district. And every month, we like to recognize a member of KEA. This month, we are recognizing Keenan Siski. Keenan teaches seventh grade math at King Middle School. He's in his sixth year of teaching. Before teaching at King Middle, he taught seventh and eighth grade math in eastern Kentucky at John M. Stumbo. Keenan has committed to holding students to high standards while making math as creative and fun as possible. So we want to congratulate Keenan tonight. Unfortunately, he could not be with us, so we will accept this for him and make sure that he gets it. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
So right now, for any of our award recipients, we do have a backdrop. If you'd like to get some pictures of your students with the backdrop, please do so now. We'll take about a five-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene. You're more than welcome to come back and watch the rest of the board meeting, or you can...
Ladies and gentlemen, we will continue this minutes from the meeting. Right now, we'll discuss officer relations, if you'd like that.
At this time, we'd like to open up nominations for our board chair.
Um, I would like to make a motion for Randy Phillips.
Second. All in favor?
Any other nominations?
No.
No.
Have that, sorry.
Okay, thank you all very much. I appreciate your trust. Going forward, let's now have, I need nominations for our board vice chairman. Okay, we have a nomination, Cliff Prue. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, if no further nominations, all in favor, say aye, Cliff Prue, remaining vice chairman, very much. Next, we have personnel appointments for board secretary. I would certainly like to announce appointment for Holly Cook, to remain on board secretary. Second. We have a second, all in favor? Department of our Board Treasurer, I'd like to appoint Amber Meyer for that role. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor? And the final personnel appointment will be our board attorney. I would like to nominate Hannah Dean, continue the role of our board attorney. May I have a second?
Second.
As to Montgomery, the second, all in favor? Public participation, we do have anyone signed up this evening for public participation. So for that, we will move on to our reports, and the first one left is our finance officers' report.
Okay, we have a couple of things we'll go over in this reporting section tonight. Draft budget is on the agenda for January. As you all know, there, it does not take a vote of the board for the draft budget, it's just a review. So we went ahead and put it in this section since it's already up here. As far as the financials for December, our ending general fund cash balance is 6.7 million as opposed to 7.6 million last year at the same time. Overall revenue is down 14% compared to the prior year at the same time. Receipts received in the year were 3% lower as opposed to the prior year at the same time. And the district has received 60.3% of the revenue budgeted for the year, at 50% through the year. So that would suggest that we will receive more revenue than we have budgeted. Some of that looks a little bit low, like it looks like it's way off. Some of that is some tax collection stuff and recoding things into MUNIS where it needs to go. So you'll see a flip-flop of that, you know, for the January financials, you'll see that happen and come into play at the February board meeting. So I looked today because I wanted to make sure, because anytime I see a huge fluctuation, I start sweating a little bit. General fund expenses are up 8% compared to the prior year at the same time. Our expenses were 1.74 million in the month of December, which is about on par with where they've been. We have expended, or encumbered, 45.1% of the expenses that were budgeted for the year. And being 50% through the year, that would suggest that we will not expend as much as we have budgeted. Any questions on that? Yep, it's doing good. So then now, we're going to move on to draft budget. That's the second attachment on there. I put a summary sheet at the beginning. It's a two-pager. It kind of gives you the details of all of the other pages, so that are very small and you kind of need to look at easily. But if you notice, in this document, the spreadsheet looking, when anything that's highlighted in yellow is a change from working budget to draft budget. So just keep that in mind. So the draft budget is the first step in the budgeting process for the next school year. That has to be reviewed by the board in the month of January. At this point, there are not a lot of facts that are known at this time as far as our financials go. I'm completely estimating on a lot of things at this time. So just keep that in mind. It's very, a very preliminary look at what that budget is going to look like. We will have a much better picture at our tentative budget time in May, because at that point in time, you will be approving staffing allocations next month for, that will drive the money that goes up to the Section Six and Section Seven dollars, and then it will also drive the number of staff that will be in each building, teaching staff and that kind of thing. So that will drive that tentative budget at that point in time. And then you'll also agree of a salary schedule at some point. We're kind of waiting on the General Assembly to kind of see some things before we make any determinations of what options we can, you know, we may even have. So that normally, it can happen, you know, anytime, and typically April or May, but that also drives that tentative budget at that point in time. So this actual budget has revenue budgeted at 25.3 million, receipts in the year of 20.4 million. That includes a beginning balance of 4.9 million. I have not changed anything in regards to like the actual tax revenue that you all said tax rates on in August. But I did update some of those budget deadline items for other taxes, because we have historically over the last three years seen them increase a little bit, so I took that into consideration a little bit in that revenue as well. On here, it says seek revenue anticipated to stay close to current, and that's when I first got started with this, and I apologize that I didn't update that. So it has, I mean, we are going to see probably a decrease in seek revenue. And the reason why is our enrollment is down currently. We are being funded on 1819 school enrollment and data. Not only our enrollment, but our attendance percentages are down, and that's currently the structure in the SEEK formula that we base our funding off of. So we have plugged that in, or I've plugged it into a formula that I use to try to get us close to where we think SEEK may be at that point in time. So you'll see a decrease in that in this budget. On the expense side, we have those budgeted at 23.1 million. That was a decrease of about 73,000 compared to the fiscal year 23 working budget. Some of that, you know, we have KISTI payments, which are those bus lease payments we have paid, you know, every year right now, we're paying another one off. And then some of those items are going down as well. We also, you know, fluctuate on a lot of different items in the budget. I did go through, you'll see some of those yellow highlights on some of the building funds and that kind of thing, and some of the utilities, because we were kind of waiting. That energy savings project that we did, it was hard to kind of realize what those savings were when COVID hit. So, you know, I feel fairly confident with what's in here right now. I'll continue watching that before tentative budget, and then obviously working budget in September. And that also includes the addition I see on the page right there, there's a lot of yellow that's on the screen right now, and that means changes. That is our police force, so that is added in on the budget. So that's, you know, really good. That's about where we think, because our energy savings is supposed to be saving us around $300,000 a year right now. And so adding that police force in, really, it's a little bit of a wash there, and then there were some other areas that helped with that as well. Our contingency missed either 2%, our desired level of contingency has been 12. Draft budget is normally very low. I'm actually, you know, I'm not, my eye isn't twitching quite as bad as it normally is in the month of January, because we're sitting decently in draft budget time compared to where we normally are. And that contingency is 9.10%. So right now, that just keeps that Section Six allocation amount of 139.33 per student. The Section Seven allocations that you will get for custodial are $16 per pupil and $35 per pupil for the school supplies. Right now, I have not had a change in for salary or for engine, and that says addition to the police force. So down below at the bottom of that page, it just kind of shows you that if we took that beginning balance completely away, could we survive on just the receipts we bring in in the year? Right now, no, since I've been here, no. Since way before I got here, no. I'm not sure, I've not found a year that we could ever, looking back as far as I've looked. But that's pretty common, because, you know, we utilize the funds that we bring in every year, and we need that beginning balance to help offset that. It's actually in a decent spot though. Then on the next, the top of the next page, it's just a comparison for you all to see different draft budgets throughout the last few years that we can kind of see. I mean, we're talking, you know, the last highest one in fiscal year 22 was 4.1% contingency and we're at a 9.1. So obviously, like I said, it's a big estimate right now, but I, I mean, I would be shocked if it varies hugely from that on the downward side. As far as other budget factors, we really don't know anything about our fund too. That's our grants and everything. We have no clue what those look like. I mean, we kind of go into it hoping for at least the same as we received the year before in those grants. So that's where it's sitting now in MUNIS. Food services, they continue to stay sustainable, so you'll see a little bit better picture for them in May at the tentative budget time. And then I'll just kind of tell you some of the things that I updated between working budget and draft budget, that way you can have an idea of what I've actually done in there. Any questions?
Thing was good, as always.
No problem. Thank you all.
One thing I had there, that she said a couple of things. The General Assembly, every board of education in the state of Kentucky, superintendent, finance director is watching what the General Assembly is doing this winter-spring, because SEEK, she said we went on 1819. Most school districts around the state of Kentucky are down in enrollment from the 1819 school year. There are a few exceptions, like Scott County, that are up, but most of them will lose money from going, changing from 1819 this year. And also, this year compared to all the years in the past, most districts around the state are down percentage-wise, 3% to 5%. So that also has, that hurts people's budget around the state. And then she mentioned the police departments, and the General Assembly said that they're going to, that's one of the number one things to look at, is to see how far the police, police SROs look in the state of Kentucky. Because some boards right now are already taking, you know, taking on that, taking on that cost, and then some have elected not to do it yet because they don't have the money to do it. So, so those are some things in the General Assembly that all of us will be looking at this winter-spring session.
Thanks, sir. Personnel report is just there for your review. I assume everyone's had an opportunity to bruise that. And we will move now next to our instruction report. Jason McAlister.
Good evening. Yeah, I just wanted to take an opportunity to go over our school improvement plan. And this is the formal time for school improvement planning, and, you know, we do improvement planning year-round. We, we make a plan, and we monitor it all year. At the end of the year, we look at results that we have, and we, we, you know, we see what kind of progress we've made on our goals. And at the end of the school year, we immediately start working on, on our goals for the following year. In the summer, we have each of the buildings and departments work on a priority plan where they're talking about the goals that they set for themselves. And we hope that those plans, that's what we monitor the first half of the year until we get to the improvement plan phase in November and December. And we, we hope that those priority plans that the schools build just work straight into the improvement planning that we do during this time. Each year, the state, you know, it gives us a deadline here to finish these in December, and each year that they change some mandatory goals that they have on them. So the mandatory goals for this year were a little bit different. We have a combined reading math goal, a combined science, social studies, and writing goal, an English learner progress goal, a quality of school climate and safety goal, post-secondary readiness goal, a graduation rate goal, and an achievement gap goal. So those have changed, and they do change each year a little bit. We've had growth goals in the, in the past, and some different things, and some different wording. We've had proficiency goals, and novice reduction goals, and things like that. So those were the ones that were presented for the, the schools this year. Each of the schools, they, they put together an improvement plan at their building, and then the district puts together an improvement plan as well. What we try to work together to do is make sure that the goals that we're using in short term, every few months, are the same ones that we're using in these big planning processes so that we can, we're just able to monitor month-to-month the kind of progress that we're wanting to make. So at the school level and at the district level, we tried to build our plans around the same goals, the goals that we've really tried to embody over the last couple of years. And those things are increasing proficiency at each grade level. You can ask the people at our building to talk about this every single month, these same goals. We want no less than 60% of our kids to be proficient. That's, that's a baseline, no less than that at any grade level and in any subject. We want to reduce novice, and we want to have there be no more than 10% novice in any grade level or any subject level. We want to make sure that no classroom or grade level has fewer than 75% of their kids meeting adequate years' growth. We want to make sure that we have best practices present in all of our classrooms, no matter the subject or the grade level. We want to make sure that we have a rigorous and vibrant intervention system for our kids starting in preschool and kindergarten and supporting them all the way through school. And we want to make sure that we have a PBI system that follows fidelity throughout our schools to support our kids socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. All these things together, we feel like we can do those. We feel like we can present a rigorous education in, in arts, academics, and athletics, all the things that we talk about in our, in our mission, in our statement. We feel like those are the things that we have to do. So you have the, I provided you with the plans for your review. These were the things that we, we based our planning on at the, at all the levels, at all the buildings. They will build goals similar to the ones that I'm telling you about. They have a few that are individualized, just such as, you know, they'll have, they have programs, social-emotional programs that they're, they're really putting in place, mentoring that they're putting in place, technology and innovation that they're putting in place. We have a leader in me program that's going on. We have the, you know, the high school that is really working on their transition readiness and getting kids more transition-ready. So there are a lot of, there are some individual things that are going on at the school levels, and a lot of the things in their plans are going in to, to support these goals that I talked about here as a district. We have all the schools that are, they're, they're working on best practices in their classroom and monitoring those each month. And then with our, our iReady Universal Screener, really using data to make decisions in their building and to gauge each month whether we're making adequate progress. And lastly, I would tell you that we, three of our schools were designated as TSI this year in special education. That was a separate area that we haven't had a, we've had informal goals for, but we hadn't, we hadn't made formal plans. So it was a good process for us to go through that. We met with an advocate from KDE who came and met with us and our, our building leaders to develop a plan in a way that we could, we could put some tangible plans in place to monitor that growth. And even though we have proficiency, novice, and growth goals for all of our students, we want to apply them to all of those areas. We talked about some very specific plans that we could try to put together to make sure that we were addressing, really raising the bar academically for students with IAPs in our district and monitoring that month-to-month. So that is the planning process that we put together, and we'll, we'll continue to monitor it in short-term, month-to-month, and revisit it at the end of the year.
Questions? Good work as always, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay, random protestant, Coach Buchanan.
Very brief, just to give you an overview of this year so far. We've had two of our minimum of four random drug tests. Again, we'll have at least four, we could have more. We've had two. They've been sort of a nine event, which is good. It's a credit to our high school staff and our middle school administration staff, you know, comes off pretty well. I would try to make three little reminders to our coaches and sponsors, no one participates without a form on file, making sure that, you know, we're not on our I's, crossing our T's, that we're being fair for it to be effective, it's got to be fair. And, you know, I didn't And, you know, didn't have a lot to report, but, you know, obviously, the Fendom crisis, I don't think I can overstate that. I want you to have some good resources. Wall Street Journal, they've got a series of articles there that I think you'll get some good information, a lot of stuff out there that, you know, tries to persuade us to think one way or another. I think their stuff's probably about as good as you can get. So appreciate this opportunity and what you all are doing, providing for our students. Our community's wonderful. I'm thankful that, that you guys, you all, all allowed me to, to fulfill this role. Do you have any questions for me, C?
Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Next will be our student report.
I do not have much to say this month, but I do want to say that the, the remodeling and the redoing of the middle school bathrooms is much, I know it'll be much appreciated. I was there. I went there for three years, so I can say personally that they were old and they, they needed some work, but I know they, the students at the middle school will be glad to use that. And I also know that our softball and baseball team are excited at their new fields and their new facilities. So all good things coming from those improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. I absolutely appreciate that. Up next, our superintendent's report. Mr. Brewer.
Yes, I've got a couple of things to, to talk about here, and a lot of it's on the agenda later on here. But a couple of things first. We had, during Christmas break, the worst time on Christmas Day, of course, we had pipes busting in our elementary. I know some of those that worked here on Christmas Day cleaning up a mess with our, with the pipes busting because it was in the negatives, you know, and you just, we just couldn't prevent it. But I appreciate, I hate to name, I hate to get into names because then I'll leave somebody off, but there was a lot of people that came and worked on Christmas Day or day before, day after, all three of them, cleaning that up. And I appreciate that, and I let them know that, and they just did a great job. And secondly, we had a extreme weather day last week, and, you know, 280 touchdown, I think, on one side of our high school, and then went back up in the, in the sky, and then came back down on the other side of our schools. So we were really blessed and fortunate that that didn't impact our schools. But, you know, safety's always our number-one thing. And to come out of that and have 2,700 kids, 500 staff members, and everybody was safe with minimal damage to our grounds outside was great. But everybody pulled together. We had lights off at all four schools for a little while, and then two of them came back on, and then the elementary and middle school had power off for many hours, and nobody complained. Everybody was, it was all a team there. They got together. They just said, we'll deal with what we got, you know, the hay we dealt. And that was, you know, those two things just kind of defines what being a type, being a part of this school system is all about. And it was just everybody pulling together, not complaining or anything because it was Christmas Day and having to do that, or, or coming, you know, last week having open power with, with 600 or 700 kids in your school building. But it was great to see, you know, how our staff came together, and I appreciate each and every one of them for how they handled those two situations. Academically, I got to speak to our Mercer Central graduates. I think there was 11 in there. Is Mr. Moby here? Do you know this day? I mean, there was? Was 11. So we had 11 students graduating from Mercer Central midway, you know, at the, after the first semester, which was great. So I got to talk to them. I think they went bowling and, and celebrated and got to eat a hamburger, I guess, in the bowling alley. But that was, that was great to see those 11 graduating there at Christmas time. We got to visit some elementary schools. I know our architects are here. They, they got to go with us. We live in Northern Kentucky. We moved to elementary a week or two ago. They're two new schools, so we're kind of taking design ideas of what we want our new elementary school to look like. We're in partnership with Fish and Wildlife from the state to across from the middle school, that little open field that we bush hog, kind of where the practice soccer field is there on the corner. We're in partnership with Fish and Wildlife. They're going to give us enough seed for wildflowers for a half acre there, or maybe an acre. So you'll see some nice fresh flowers hopefully come up this spring. And then our ag department, I'm going to talk to them about maybe working that and talking about pollination, cross-pollination, and how everything works and kind of keeping them up. So that'd be neat to see across from the Kingville School. And our arts, we talked about those that, earlier, the Kingville School students being selected for the KBA All-District Band was Livy Walden, Tabitha Grant, and Carrie Gabbard. At the high school, we had All-Region Band members, Emily Kirk singer, Reagan Daniels, Hannah Hardy, and John Frost. Congratulations to all those students for making All-District All-Region Band. And in athletics, I want to say a big congratulations to our girls' basketball team. We won a win the state championship and making the final four in the state of, state of Kentucky for a Class AA down in Ellisboro, our girls' basketball did, especially since one of our star players, you know, was out for the season. So that was a great, great showing in the state tournament. Then our archery team continues to do great things. I know they, they hosted a meet here two weekends ago, I believe it was, and they had the third, fourth, and the fifth ranked teams in the state of Kentucky here with them, and we finished second. So I thought that was a great showing for our archery team. And then lastly, I'd like to, of course, it's board appreciation, so I'm going to ask Mr. Brewer here if he'll get, we got a little gift. I know you've got some gifts in front of you already, but from the central office, we'd just like to say thank you for all of you do, for, for the students and staff at Mercer County. That's a, that's a long sleep pull-over in there. We appreciate all you do for our student staff, Mercer County Schools. So if you all would join me and give them applause, it would just all be. Clearly, he's not here tonight, so we'll have to.
That's an extra one. That's what that means.
Oh, okay.
Let's split this candy up.
Thank you.
And I want to echo Mr. Brewer and let him speak on behalf of the board, to have two weird weather phenomena happen in a month, not even that. And the reports I got and the information I got with how well all of our staff, administrators, office staff, teachers, everybody stepped, especially last Friday. It was crazy. And for that to happen that quickly and for everybody to pull together, it just makes me proud. So I want to salute every one of you, and I want to give you all the applause. And as a parent, a kid there, it gives me a lot of reassurance knowing that we've got a lot of great people looking out for them. So thank you for all of you. I can send agenda items. Most of you have already reviewed everything on there. Is there anything we need to discuss, in particular, Mr. Brewer?
I recommend the Peyton, the service that we're going to offer. Not every school system does this for their, their staff, but we've got a great service for our boys. So if you would real quickly just discuss the, the staff health clinic visit.
Good evening. I've met some of you all on the need of Peyton. I'm a nurse practitioner here in the district. So I started billing staff insurance for Anthem last March. I'm, I'm able to see staff for, like, minor illnesses, like strep, strew, flu, and so forth. But we do have some staff in the district who have other insurances, like Humana or United, through your spouse or for whatever reason. And I cannot look for them at this time. I can only go for Anthem. I have started the process of applying to these other insurance companies, but it just takes time and having that contract. So I talked to Nelsie County, and they kind of did like a self-pay sheet for staff that don't have Anthem. And I was going to get you all to see if you have any questions about this. So what Anthem pays, did you all get a copy of this?
Okay.
So if I see a staff with Anthem insurance, they pay in, like, the third column, and I just pretty much carry that over to a self-pay cost. Because like if an Anthem, sorry, staff member, if they have a method deductible, then that's their other copy cost. So to make it, like, fair across the board and be able to offer my services to all staff, we do this self-pay sheet. Questions about this?
The great thing we talked about, about this service is, you know, before, you would always have to take a half of the SIC day or a full SIC day to go to your doctor. Now they can just run over there and see her quickly, get back to class, very low, very minimal hospital structure.
Or I can see their, their billings, all of their lunch and whatever. Yeah, it'd be possible for them to be reimbursed with their insurance if they do a self.
I don't think so, but, well, I don't know that they could use their flex card for that either, but so.
This is a great service for our, our staff, plus it cuts down on lost construction time, which is to be a marshal.
And I have started the process of trying to get potential through those other companies. It's just, it takes a while to get approved, and then we have to get a contract, and then have them have to review it, so it just takes a while.
Nothing to stash, I suppose.
No.
Doesn't prove that easy, does it?
But these costs, like, with the Anthem, I think it's a little lower what they reimburse school systems versus, like, what you would go to your doctor's office and get. Like, it's just different reimbursement. So I think it's a little cheaper what they reimburse a school versus what they pay if they went to their doctor. It's just a convenience factor, to say.
Questions?
Just to update you a little quick, because I know mowing is our consent, so we understand what's going on here. I think, from what I gather, all the years in the past, we've always bid out to mow it all. So just to mow one whole campus, all of our campuses. But I think we're, we're going to, I know you all said last year, we're going to have two mowers and painters, so we'll look for hiding that, but those would be like the finishing work. But we've got big fields that you can bush hog. So instead of saying bush hog the whole campus, we'll do that, plus we'll say, well, what about we bid out just like the high school, big, large field? Because we may have some smaller companies that can handle one school, but they couldn't handle our whole campus. So hopefully, we'll get a little bit more bids. That way, we do, we do just like the, trying to think of another place, you know, the high school's got those two big fields out there, across from Kingville School, that big field we're talking about. So maybe looking out in sections, bid it out, plus doing either all of it, one big company, we bid it out. So that's just a different strategy we're going to look at, see if we can save money, get some smaller companies wanting to bid on just a particular area as well. So that's just something different this year that we're going to try.
Any other questions, discussion for consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Very good, man.
Mr. McCumber makes a motion. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Franceski, second, all in favor? Up next, we have a few action items for discussion. First will be the first reading of the alcohol drug policy, Mr. Brewer.
And a couple of these policies that you're going to see on here are policies you've actually already approved. And this summer, we had a few tweaks that we were going to make to this particular policy. There's the word shall is in there as far as the, what we are testing for, and we want to change that to a may, because shall implies we have to test for these particular areas with these particular drugs. And Ms. Peyton is actually going to start picking up some of our employee drug testing, and the company that she works with does not test for all those areas with the kits that she has. The synthetic drugs is the one, and then is it quellants?
Methaque.
Methaque. So those are drugs that are not really around anymore. That's, you know, so this just allows us the flexibility to use her testing versus using the company we were using before, because that shall require us to, to block that in. So this is the first reading, and that's really the only change to that policy.
Questions? And again, this is the first reading of the policies. Okay, if nothing further, 14B will be a shortened school day for a student.
Hello. For those of you all I haven't met, I'm Shanna Hale. I'm the Director of Special Education. Glad to be here. In your agenda, you'll find an attachment for a shortened school day for a student here in Mercer County. There is, on that document, evidence of medical need. Those medical needs are also documented in the student's individual education plan. In order to shorten his school day, we do need to, we do need board approval. So if you guys have any questions about that, you can let me know. That document should be in your agenda.
Do you recommend approval?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a recommended motion for approval. Can I have a second? Canyon, Mr. Yeager makes that motion. Can I have a second, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McCumber, second, all in favor? Next will be 14C, non-resident student transfer registration.
So this is a policy you all have already approved. And during the summer, you can get those new policy updates. And what happened was, I believe, we approved this policy in May, and then we had a change in our, our secretary about that time, and at the same time, KSBA had a change in the person who handles our board policies. So when we sent our board policy, this board policy, up for them to include as part of our board policies, it didn't get, it didn't get to the right person when it was supposed to. And KSBA, at the same time, they introduced a different board policy, which was in that packet that went through this summer. So you all actually approved this one in May, and then approved another one this summer that's similar to this, but not the same. And so we need to go back to the, the policy that we've approved that we have, that's in front of you now. So there's nothing different than what you've approved before.
Can I please have a, a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Franceski makes a motion. Can I have a second? Mr. McCumber, second, all in favor? Up next will be our, we have to do this every year, so everyone knows, where we have to vote on and approve the meeting dates for the 2023 calendar year. There are a couple of changes. One would be, instead of the, in April, we would actually be on the Fourth Tuesday, but there's some scheduling conflicts, and it should be attached to your agenda. And then in December, it would be the Second Tuesday, and again, with holiday breaks and everything, that's why we're looking to move those. Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Brewer?
Now, since it's for this calendar year, I would add, put January 16th in there just to make sure that we know when we meet again next January to select these names.
Any discussion? If not, can I have a motion for approval?
Make a motion.
Mr. McCumber makes a motion. Can I have a second? Yeager, second, all in favor? Okay, up next will be the second reading of our SRO policy. Should put everything else, if you want to get up and down some.
I guess at this point, you know, the policy is the same that you all reviewed last month. Do you have, have any questions to ask? You've had some chance, time to look at it and consider it.
I want you to briefly tell them the steps, so once we have what we're.
So this is the first step, so to get this policy in place, once this is, this is approved, then the next thing, I've given Mr. Phillips and Mr. Brewer, there's a, a list of items that we have to submit for what's called an ORI number. And that ORI number is what we would use to establish for our law enforcement agency. And so that, along, this policy, along with the board motion that you all approved, where you agreed to establish the agency, Officer Shoemaker has been hired to be our SRO. So we have to submit his certifications and his POPS training, and the different, kind of the mission, the vision, the overall process for this SRO to Frankfurt. And then they send that to, actually, it goes through to the FBI, and then all our information is reviewed, and they, they will determine if we have all the things in place to have an ORI, or ORI number. So that, that's how we get our number and to become an affiliate. So that, that's how we get our number and to become an official agency. And then after we do that, while we're doing that, we're gonna start working on getting some communication with dispatch, and we'll have to set up, there's a process for Officer Shoemaker to be able to run, background checks, um, for, you know, if there was an incident on campus, that he would be able to check to see, um, if there was wards outstanding and things like that. So all those things have to go in play, are gonna be going into place while we're waiting on this information to come back.
Do you all have any kind of idea on the projected timeline?
I really, I don't have a whole lot of, um, information to go on. I know we've made contact with Erin, who works at, um, in Frankfurt, and she's kind of our liaison for doing this, and she's, she's gonna check everything that we have. I feel like we've got it all lined up pretty well, and then she makes sure that we have our ducks in the room, and then she's upset, uh, of the chain, but I'm hoping that we'll get turnaround in a month, just based on the ORI number, but I think it just depends on, you know, I don't know that that's anything we have real control over, so.
I just wondered, I don't know if that's a lengthy process to get it through, or if.
Talking with, um, Clyde Raylord, who's the, um, State Marshal that we deal with here, um, he does, uh, he acted like about a month turnaround, is what his experience has been, so I'm hoping that that's the case.
That'd be good.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any further questions, or anything else you need to add?
Oh, that's good. So since we've become a police, we have our own police department, police agency, uh, we've got our new Chief of Police back here, Officer Shoemaker, and then we'll start, uh, looking at hiring another SRO, uh, to help him out, so that'll be the next steps for that. But this is the second reading, so we'll need to have a motion.
Okay, so as Mr. Hoover said, this is the second reading, which means he can take a vote on this policy, so I would like to have a motion, uh, to approve the SRO policy. Mr. Montgomery makes a motion?
I'll second.
Can you have a second, Amber? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Uh, we do have a few items here for roll call vote. And the first one up is our staffing guidelines.
Okay, so every year you all, uh, at least review these. Sometimes they change, sometimes they don't. We did make a few changes on this one compared to last year. Um, on page three of it, you'll see this box right here. That used to be in our salary schedule, the administrator chart, um, and we moved it out of the salary schedule and put it into the staffing guidelines where it really belongs, because that's what it's telling us, is how we're going to stack those administrative positions in the school. Um, something I wanna point out, there are some asterisks beside the, um, bottom two numbers of both the elementary and the middle school. Those are those additional counselor positions that you all approved, and we added in this, uh, school year. So I just made a note down there that that is what we're paid on top of the normal allocation. If at any point we need to change that, we can, but right now, this is how it stands. Um, the only other change we had was we removed those cafeteria custodian positions that we had in a few years back. Uh, pri, they were known prior to that as lunchroom monitors, and it was misleading to people because they would apply thinking, oh, I'm gonna help all the kids open up all their juice and their apples and all of these little packets and things, but they were really the custodian in the, in the cafeteria. Uh, and so a lot of them went stark, and they would quit because they didn't wanna do that. And so we had rebranded the name of that, um, so to align more so with what they were actually doing every day, but we have actually absorbed those positions. It's really difficult for us to even hire custodians sometimes, so we went ahead and absorbed those positions in with their normal allocation, and that's something that, and that was kind of the trajectory we were on anyway, was to get to the point where the schools could take that over, because the schools, uh, staffing for custodians are based on their square footage, and so, um, that's every bit of that building, no matter if other people are cleaning those areas or not. So those are really the only two changes in there. Are there any questions?
If no, uh, questions, can I have a motion to approve? Mr. Montgomery makes a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Yeager, second. Roll call, Mr. Hoover.
District one, Amber Franceski?
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager?
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Uh, K S, KMS restroom renovations.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Irwin. I'm an architect with Ross Torrent Architects, um, and I just wanted to, uh, show you what we have for the construction documents for the King Middle School restroom renovation, uh, to explain the scope of this project. So this is an overall floor plan of King Middle School, and you can see, uh, the darkened areas that have the dashed, uh, circles around them, uh, those are the restrooms, and those are called out as, uh, to have detailed plans of each of those. So there are, there's a male and a female restroom, uh, close to the gym, and that'll be over to your left, and then throughout the classroom area, there's, uh, two female restrooms and one male restroom in, uh, close to the classroom areas. Next, next slide. This illustrates, uh, the condition of those restrooms. This is in the girls restroom. These are just some of the photographs, um, some that we found, and then the next one is, is for the, uh, boys restroom. Uh, some of the things specifically are, the flooring has, uh, areas where the epoxy flooring has chipped off, uh, there are not partitions at the urinals, uh, some of the spacing of the urinals is, is not up to code, um, and, uh, the, in the girls restroom, the partitions are in kind of bad shape, uh, so that was the existing conditions. So this is, uh, to show, uh, all the items that are being, uh, worked on, and I think the main thing is we are putting in new, um, uh, toilets, uh, new urinals, new sinks, and we will be, um, redoing all of the finishes. A new floor, new wall, uh, new finishes on the wall, and a new ceiling. Um, the, um, the sinks are being, instead of those individual, uh, wall mounted sinks, we are putting in a new unit, uh, of three in, in these two cases, uh, in some of the other ones, it's just a unit of two, uh, that are wall mounted, uh, and I'll have a picture of that. But they, those, uh, and then these are for the, uh, the individual restrooms that are in the, uh, close to the classrooms. But all of those tags are just e, each of the accessories that go in, in the classroom. Uh, there, we won't be moving any of the walls, uh, with the exception of, uh, if you can go back on the slide, uh, the wall that houses the, uh, all of the urinals, that wall will be, uh, demolished, and those urinals will be respaced, and there will be partitions mounted, uh, so that it's appropriate spacing. I think those, those are the main changes. Uh, there will also be, in the left, uh, restroom, at the bottom right of that restroom, uh, we are putting in a, a new extension to that partition, uh, it is just slightly less than what is required for ADA, so we're putting in a new partition, uh, doorway there to, so that it will be ADA standards, which is the Disabilities Act standard. Uh, this is a, a photograph from the information sheet for the, uh, sinks that will be used, uh, for those areas, they, they come in threes or in twos. So the overall number, you, you might have noticed, the overall number of sinks, uh, in the restroom will actually be lessening, uh, but what you have currently is far in more than what is required by code. So, uh, there, there's fewer sinks, uh, in the bathrooms, but it is more than enough for code, what is required by code. Um, we also have on your agenda this evening, that goes with the construction documents, a BG two. Uh, this basically is just illustrating, um, there's proposed alternates, and we had a discussion just before this meeting that is going to actually simplify those alternates. Basically, we wanted to have some options at, on the bid day for the finishes, uh, whether there'll be all tile on the walls, or, uh, less tile, or the, the treatment of the flooring, whether that flooring will be the flake epoxy flooring, or a tile, porcelain tile flooring. So that's basically what that is. So those, those will be altered some, but, um, the request is that you have some options for alternates for, um, for the finishes on bid day, that you can say, this is gonna cost X amount, you know, what, what the contractor will actually be able to provide it for, and then you can, uh, you know, weigh those options with an actual price. And then the next slide is, uh, the BG three, uh, which shows, uh, the, uh, different, uh, cost, which is, was different, different from the BG one, uh, that you had approved. Uh, it's less, which is always a good thing, but the reasoning behind it being less is that, uh, the BG one, we were including scope in the kitchen for, uh, the dishwasher and some sanitary sewer work. Uh, it was discovered, uh, through field verification that, uh, that was not gonna be necessary, that that sanitary sewer was, just needed to be cleaned out rather than to be replaced, and the, um, and so there is, there was less scope, like, less things that we were doing. And so, you know, through field verification, also with, uh, HVAC, uh, they were better able to define what the needs were for that, and so that, uh, price came down a bit. So that, that's the reasoning behind that. And so our schedule is, uh, that we will have this, uh, out to bid, and that's also pending your approval this evening and pending KDE approval. So out to bid on the ninth of February. A pre-bid meeting, uh, would be, uh, 2:22 at four o'clock. Uh, we would have the bid opening at the board office here on the ninth of March at two, and, um, agenda, we would then make a letter of recommendation to, for accepting a successful bid on 4th to 14th, uh, meeting, uh, a word of construction contract on the 21st, and then that would allow for the, uh, all of the equipment, all the materials to be ordered and in place, and so construction could then start as soon as, uh, students are out for the summer, and be substantially complete by the end of July, and up and running and ready for students when they come back in August.
Yeah, do we, uh, have to have all of the selections going for the finishes prior to, uh, seeking, uh, seeking bids?
No, we do not.
So those can be done later?
Yes. We specify the type of material, you know, whether it be tiles, like epoxy, or those sorts of things. All of our specifications go to several manufacturers, um, which is required, uh, for a public bid pro, uh, project. And then, once the bid is successful, uh, we will know which of those, uh, material manufacturers, uh, are part of the bid. They will then submit, uh, as part of this middle process, once the contract options, you know, this is our manufacturer, these are the colors that we provide, and we would select colors. But the finishes, the quality of finish, uh, and the type of finishes is all in the specifications, and those decisions, we did talk about already.
Ma, do you have anything before I ask for a motion?
Now, so the first one, I, you know, there's a couple different things, the BG two, BG three. Uh, the one thing I asked them, I said, we're just gonna make sure that, that we get this completed before school starts, because we don't wanna delay, because we don't have any bathrooms, uh, and the middle schools, we don't, so we just gotta make sure these, whoever's a winning bid, uh, knows at times of the essence, and we have to get this completed by the start of school.
Okay, if no, uh, other further questions, can I please have a motion for approval of BG two and BG three? Ms. Franceski makes a motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Montgomery, second. Roll call, sir.
District one, Amber Franceski?
Yes.
District ten, Larry Yeager?
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
We can do those together, and I don't have to do them individually, do we?
I have a question.
I just want to check. I thought.
What did you specify when you mentioned?
Which we did, we mentioned both of them. Uh, 15C, KMS, restroom renovation construction.
So we just, construction documents.
Yeah. Okay, what's that?
Was that not all the documents?
That's all I was wondering, what do you have?
We just got it on.
Actually, we need to, actually, the documents.
Um, yeah, the B, the construction documents are the drawings and the specifications, which is separate from the BG two and BG three. So we do need a motion.
Second motion.
Yes.
Thank you for clarifying. Uh, so can I, if there's no discussion, uh, can I have a motion for approval of these documents?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery makes a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Franceski, second. Roll call, sir.
District one, Amber Franceski?
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager?
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes. Next up, 15D, these are just the bathroom bids for the middle school, uh, rationale seeking approval to advertise bids for this project pending KDE approval. So I thought we did on this one. Uh, so can I have a motion to approve the advertising bids?
I'll move it.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery makes a motion. Can I have a second? Mr. Yeager, second. Roll call.
District one, Amber Franceski?
Yes.
District ten, Larry Yeager?
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes. Okay. 15E, athletics change order.
So a couple of change orders on the athletic project. Uh, the, in the base bid, was the baseball black windscreen that goes around. We were gonna customize that, put Marshall County Titans, um, out in the, out in the outfield, uh, all those panels, and also get one to match the, uh, for the softball, that we both, you know, I mean, baseball didn't have to do one, and then, and softball didn't have one, but they had the whole blue one, so, uh, that's, that's the change order of number one. The, the second one gives us a credit back, uh, and that's because we can get our maintenance, uh, crew to put the toppers along the fence line, uh, and I guess the timing's, extension's on there for, for, uh, weather days, just three days.
Any questions? Okay. Uh, if no questions, can I get a motion for approval of change order number five?
Make a motion.
Okay, Ms. Franceski makes a motion. May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Mr. Montgomery, second. Roll call, sir.
District one, Amber Franceski?
Yes.
District ten, Larry Yeager?
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery?
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips?
Yes.
Three ladies. Three ladies. Three days, three days is all the extension, but none needed.
So this change order is for days requested through October for weather days, or November, I think November. So there have been several more delays according to weather. And so, yes, there will be, they will, the contractor will be asking for more days. When they do that, we are very rigorous about them showing us proof that they were unable to do any work at all. And so that goes through a rigorous process to decide how many are valid weather days that they can claim. So there has been delays to the project, and that will be kind of forthcoming. So it's always a bit of a delay when they actually get those written into the contract through change order.
Just keep it until then.
Okay, our final action on the roll call, 15F, reconvene LBC, FKK.
Okay, so my last board meeting, you all said, do we want to, or asked you all, do you want to reconvene the LBC to look at doing their elementary school, or do elementary school, just like we have our current setup, and that's preschool through second grade? You all voted, said yes, so I had to send that to KDE. I got their approval back. So now the next step is you all approving to have the LBC reconvene, and that date's going to be January 23rd, next Monday. Once that happens, then it has to go to KDE, and then we got to advertise for a week, and they get their, up to 30 days. Then we've got to advertise a newspaper for a week, so it's five weeks probably. And then, once we reconvene the LBC the second time, and there's no problems there, then we'll bring it to the next board meeting, and then we start the design process for the new elementary school. So it's kind of, you all did reconvene the LBC, now KDE has to approve, now we're back, you all have to do it a second time, and then we'll reconvene it next Monday on January 23rd.
If no question for discussion, can I get a motion for approval to reconvene the LBC?
Make a good motion.
Mr. Yeager makes a motion. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Mr. Montgomery, second, roll call, sir.
District one, Amber Franceski.
Yes.
District two, Larry Yeager.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. Okay, can I now have a motion to enter to executive session pursuant to KRS 61-8101C? Mr. Yeager makes a motion? Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Franceski, all in favor? Okay, can I please have a motion to enter to executive session?
Make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Montgomery makes a motion. Mr. Franceski, second, all in favor? No action related to executive session. So if no further items, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Montgomery, motion, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Franceski, second, all in favor? Aided adjournment.